At this time, we'll call it Tuesday, February eighth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Larry McDevitt. What's your name? Mike. Jack Willie are the county supervisors. Lisa Smith and Bjorn from the Auditor's Office. Luann from the Supervisor's Office. And first item on the agenda today is secondary roads equipment bid opening.
Morning. So what we're doing today is opening bids for purchasing two cloud tandem axles with boxes and one new motor grader. And these are for purchase in fiscal year twenty-three. We just want to get a start on the.
So the first business morning is from Martin Equipment. It is a motor grader bid. Price for one motor grader is three hundred and forty thousand five hundred dollars. A trade-in of fifty-five thousand for a net bid of two hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred. The second bid today is from Al Toppers. This would be a Caterpillar. Price for one current motor grader is three hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. A trade-in of fifty thousand for a net bid of three hundred and four thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
We'll be trading days. Mike?
John, John, dear.
The shop.
It's the sparing of Coca-Cola, right? Yeah, the Preston should would be getting the new one.
The next set of bids are for the tandem axle trucks. This is from Thompson Truck and Trailer. The base quote is one hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for each of them. A trade-in for county number three, one, one, two, for twenty-five thousand. Trade-in of county number three, one, three, eight for twenty-two thousand. For a net bid of two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Each. No, that's total, right?
That that's the net is two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty-six.
That's just a chance. Correct.
The next bid is from RDO Truck Centers. The base quote is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars for each truck. Trade-in on county number three, one, one, two is twenty-five thousand. Trade-in on the county number thirty-one, thirty-eight is forty thousand. For a net bid of two hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. And those are for Mack trucks. They also are submitting a quote for Volvo trucks. The base quote is one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Each. The trade-in on county ID number three, one, one, two is twenty-five thousand. Trade-in on county ID three, one, three, eight is forty thousand for a net bid of two hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. This bid is from Truck Country of Cedar Rapids. The base bid for a freight later freight line, excuse me, freight liner truck is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Trade-in on county tag three, one, one, two is fifteen thousand. Trade-in on county tag thirty-one, thirty-eight is five thousand. For a net quote of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Truck Country of Cedar Rapids. Two thirty-five what?
Eight sixty.
Two thirty-five, eight sixty-eight.
What truck make was that?
This is for a freight liner. This bid comes from GTG Peterbilt out of Davenport. This is for two Peterbilt trucks. The base bid is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Trade-in on county ID three, one, one, two is twenty-nine thousand. Trade-in on county ID thirty-one, thirty-eight is twenty-six thousand. For a net bid of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. This is for the truck bodies. Are we done with the trucks?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we go into the two tandem dump bodies. This is.
I'm sorry, Sean, do you know, is Truck Country, do you have a say in the Truck Country?
Yes, okay, yes. He just does the municipal bids out of Cedar Rapids. That's where that fellow's based.
We have nothing from MHC?
Not usually known.
Okay.
Okay, the next set of bids are for two tandem dump bodies. This is from Vinell Industries. The base bids are one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-two cents. For a total bid of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, sixty-four dollars, eighty-four cents.
I don't want you to get in.
I see. The next one is from Monroe. So two tandem dump bodies is ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. For a total bid of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. The next bid is from Tri-State Truck Equipment. The first bid is for a highway. The base bids are one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Say they're again a hundred and nine.
One thou- one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. For a total bid of two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Also from Tri-State Truck Equipment, they are also, their bid is for a Swenson. Their base bid is a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. For a net bid of two hundred and nine thousand, forty-eight dollars. The last bid is from Henderson. Henderson bids a base bid of a hundred and two thousand and sixty dollars. For a net bid of two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and twenty.
Questions on anything that Sean can answer?
Oh, yeah, maybe. I don't know if you've talked to any of them or some of the dealers as far as availability and or locking in prices. I know we had an issue last year with.
Nobody will guarantee anything, Mike.
Then what have we been for now? That's kind of the thing.
Something that happened a lot of the other colleagues that were seeing from the engineers discussion getting hit with charges and things.
Well, I don't think.
Anybody's guess.
Very volatile, volatile right now, but yeah.
Okay, you're going to review these and go back with recommendation next week?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions from your side, I guess?
Okay. This time we'll have Representative Lee Heine address the board.
Sure.
Introduce himself.
State Representative Lee Heine, I am originally from the Monticello area where I farm. Got involved in the legislature back in two thousand and ten. Have served as the AG Chair and now I currently serve as the Ways and Means Chair. As you guys know, deal with property taxes and and a lot of other things and so. With redistricting, looks like I am going to be, hopefully be here serving Jackson County. And just wanted to stop by, introduce myself and let you know that I'm available as a resource or a sounding board. I appreciate you guys letting me know on certain issues. I won't always say that I have the answer. Or I won't always say I agree with you, but feedback is is always good for me. And I've always had a good relationship currently with the Delaware County Board and with the Jones County Board. I'm, like I say, I'm available and willing to come and meet with you periodically throughout the year. I mean, I can't do it every, but maybe before we go down or a wrap up afterwards, whatever you guys want, so. I will give you guys a card.
So Jackson County split, which side do you have, the bigger side?
I have the bigger side. I have the bigger side. I have all of Jackson County except for the the three townships down in the southwest corner, so. Thank you. You guys mentioned the compensation board and I'd love to hear your your input on it. I do know that there is at least one bill that deals with them. I actually think it's going to get some traction with what has gone on in the last year. I haven't actually read the bill, but I've been in contact with the the chairman of the local government. And from what I know of it, I think it will keep the compensation board intact. But they will become what I call an advisory board. And then ultimately you guys will make the decisions on the salaries. They will advise and then it's up to you to to.
Well, that's what we're doing now.
No, you have to follow, you have to follow whatever they say and then you can reduce it. But when you reduce it, you have to reduce it.
All equal.
All equal.
That's that's the part that's really.
That's true.
Because they threw one in the twenty-five point four percent and one in at five percent.
Yep, yep. And that's, like I say, I firmly believe that the decision-making process needs to rest on you.
Right here.
Yep, yep.
Well, it's it's not a whole lot different than being in business. I mean, if you can't deal with your employees and the people you work with, that's the issue right away, so. And I understand it's difficult for the count board who, again, don't work with these people on a daily basis. Yep. So they're, they don't know how they treat the public, how they treat their employees. Or any of them factors that factor in longevity, whatever it may be. You know, so again, they they come and meet twice a year at at most, I think. And they're supposed to make a decision based on numbers, number of people that lives in your county. Well, that's. There's a whole lot more factors, I think.
Yeah, no, and I I I don't disagree with you and like saying, I think by leaving the board there as what I call an advisory. That gives you guys or gives the public and you guys a little bit of, gives them input into it. Maybe gives you guys a little bit of cover as to how you set the rates. But ultimately it becomes your decision and you have to deal with each and every one of them and go from there now. Like I said, I have seen this different versions of of how to handle count boards probably every year since I've been down there. But I actually think this year, this one may have some legs that will get up and and move, so.
And plus, you know, each one, each of the elected officials have a have a representative. But those representatives have no idea what the other officials do. They have no idea really what we do.
Our rep has never been here for a meeting.
No, and and I'll tell you, it it's not a two-hour morning, meeting on Tuesday morning.
Yeah.
And that's what a lot of the general public think, you know, they go in there for two hours and they get paid this amount of money. But that's just the smallest amount of time that we spend a lot more time than that. And it gets frustrating when we're the ones that control the budget, our almost eighteen million dollar budget. And I guess I get upset because we don't get, I don't think we get the respect we should from that comp board.
I can tell you that there was a bulletin put out by ISACA and I did fill out the salary survey. They wanted to know what the count board recommended and then what was the action taken by the board? Of course, there is no official action yet, but it sounded like that was going to be something that would be coming up here shortly because they wanted a reply right away.
I try to read, you know, what's what's going on, but there's a lot of different bills. I mean, a couple in particular, I guess, that I'm interested in would, of course, have come up last week and now it's been a lot of discussion on it. But the cameras in the screw rooms as far as parents being able to have the ability to watch the teachers and their children. I know it's 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 got some controversy behind it.
Yeah, and I will tell you, I don't know where this one's going to land because I do not sit on the education committee. So I haven't really, you probably know about it as much as I do, other than the emails that I've started to get. And I have to kind of research the idea of, yeah, there's, as I heard you guys talk, the cost of the school districts could be astronomical. And then then there becomes the the rights of protecting these students. Well, I'm not totally against the idea of of doing it. But as you start to look at the logistics and 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 how, what you have to protect and all that, I become, I, you know. Like I say, there's a lot of bills that that get a lot of press in the beginning of the session that just slowly.
Fade into.
Fade, yeah, yeah, they'll get put in somebody's desk and and then it's, it's by the time we get mid-session through the fines. They're not even up for discussion anymore, so.
Well, we discussed it briefly in our last Friday in our D cap board meeting and there was opinions, of course. And some of the people on that board have teachers in Dewitt District. It sounds like it may have stemmed from maybe some books or something that went through the system, so it's.
That's all over the news.
Well, it was overblown and overstated and whatnot, but you know, so whatever it is. The other issue that I'm interested in is, of course, the ATV bill that's going through.
Yep.
And, you know, I like the idea for the ability to, for the municipalities that have it and the counties that have it. But if there's no county road that goes into municipality, how you get in? I like the ability to get to the first improved road. But I don't like the fact that you're taking away local authority. Or not you, but in the bill states that, the supervisor will have to say.
Yeah.
And that's a problem with me because of the fact we pass an ordinance. So now, when they, if they write a citation, they write it against the ordinance and the fines money stays in our county. That's how I look at it.
Yeah.
I don't need my fine money for speeding or no insurance to go to the state. I, you know, I'm okay with it, leave it. Well, we work for it and. But I still think each each county or each supervisors should have some control of their county. For the fact, well, they know where the bad spots are. They know where the intersections at should be aware of or, you know, you can't ride this road because it's dangerous.
I'm not, like I say, I I, once again, that bill is not in my, first of all, I guess I should tell you where, what I. I serve as the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, so I spend a lot of time in that committee. I also serve on the AG Committee and I serve on on the Legislative Council, which really doesn't mean a whole lot. But those are my two main committees, but with being as I am the Chair of the Ways and Means that they kind of, I don't have to. Fulfill a lot of county or committee where that bill comes on transportation. Like you say, till they get out of committee, I don't spend a whole lot of time unless somebody like you brings it to my attention. Then I go to the to the chairman and say, what does the bill actually do? And I, this is what I'm hearing. And can we do it? I know I've talked to Sheriff Grabber in Jones County. And I think that's some of his concerns is is that that over there, they have, I don't know how your guys is working, but we run twenty-four seven. And his reasoning was is that a lot of these vehicles are used for farmers that want to move back and forth from the field to the farm. Late in the evening, after dark and and the sunset or sunrise to sunset issue doesn't work for them. And so he said, we rode ours a lot broader and his, like I say. When you blanket, then you kind of have to make it. And that's what they're after is is that they want to know what the laws are. They they could believe that the laws should be the same so that as you drive from county to county, you don't get yourself in trouble. So it's kind of a balance and we have to figure out what works for for the counties. But what makes sense so that it's not, as soon as you cross from Jackson into Jones, you're under a whole different set of rules.
And that's understandable.
Yeah.
The uniformity would of course play into it, isn't it? Yeah.
I have no doubt with you, Kev.
And we've, we've done that with our ordinance. I mean, we've listened to what Clinton County has and Jones interview County and how we, how we went to it. It's been a baby step process and we thought we've done really well with it, but if they take that all away from us, then we have nothing to say about it.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll take that to the transportation chair. Maybe we can strike somewhere down, down in the middle. But I do like the idea, like you said, being able to use some of the state highways to get in and out of certain communities, because.
Well, I mean, I'm just going to use Bellevue. I don't know if you're, you're familiar with Bellevue, but there's one road to get into Bellevue. And it's Sabrina Ridge, that's it. And if I'm on the north side of Bellevue and to the south side of Bellevue, it's a probably two miles, but legally. I have to go through Andrew, which is over twenty miles. Legally, I have to go twenty miles to get to the south. So whether law enforcement looks the other way or not is is their is their deal, but the point is.
It should be legal.
It's the state highways that are the issue. And we talked about this at our legislative meeting last week and that. The the idea of the first unimproved road outside of a community, that's what I, that's what I presented and had Terry go out to the Capitol here a couple of weeks back. I said, either get the state highways, if they won't give you that, then get to the first unimproved road outside of a community. So you can get into that community, go to those small businesses and generate revenue. But the problem is, is the state highways. You know, you can't, like, one sheriff told me, he goes, well, I just wrote my ordinance for you can, you can ride it on the state highway. And I'm like, you can't do that. And he's like, well, just look the other way then. And it's like, I get it, but, you know, we also have state agencies working in our community, law enforcement agencies. And we want to be able to be consistent, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And the, that's why, that's why the ATV community went to the state and they're asking for that to make it like a state law. But I agree with you on the other side of the coin is it'd be nice to keep the the local control at the county level. And like I say, another advantage is is that it's a state law, then you, whatever county you're in, it translates as you ride into the next county. So it's it's a trick bag and I don't know how they're going to get it. It's proceeding, but I don't know how far they're going to get. And there's, there's little things, if we can just work out the state highway thing, that would solve a lot of problems.
See, and I thought I read somewhere where they were in this bill, they allow you to run on state highways as long as you're using a direct route. To get on and off of it.
The bills are right.
Yeah, so what they want you to do is, like, they don't want you to just run a state highway from one town to the next town. Use the state highway to come into town, use a gravel road or whatever to come into town, as close as you can get to town and come into town. Once you get out of town, get back on the gravels and say you go from Bellevue to Sebelo when you get down to Sebelo. You're going to have to get back on that state highway somehow to get into Sebelo. And the reason I told them to do that is at first they were talking like one tenth of a mile, two tenths of a mile, stuff like that. I said, inevitably, you're cutting somebody out of the game at three tenths of a mile, whatever it is. I said, so make it broad and make it big and go first unimproved road that they can get to. That way they have, they have an opportunity, no matter where they live, to get to there, to get to where they're trying to go. And so that's what they proceeded with. So that's worked out well. But yeah, I agree about the, you hate to lose the local control because what if the state comes in and says, okay, from sunup to sundown? Well, that limits hunters from getting in their stands. It limits farmers and I think farmers will be excluded anyway, but, but yeah. And sheriffs have different opinions on it throughout the state, like when sheriffs like, ah, everybody's a farmer and it's like, well. Like that doesn't work. Yeah, you know, we've got to figure out how it works for all of us.
And I know I, my farming operation is northeast of Monticello, but I have a lot of ground southwest. So I have to come down through Monticello. And the first time after I got it, you know, I read the farming part and I can just drive right down through, run down Highway thirty-eight and come out. And I did that and I actually talked to one of the the local town cops about it and he said, yeah, just do that. Well, I made about three trips down through and then the chief of police pulled me over and he, he said, Lee, would you quit doing that? Because I'm trying to keep everybody else off. He said, I know legally you're farming and can do that, but he said. Try to stay off of it as much as you can. And I said, hey, I agree. I don't want to. So then now I jockey through Monticello and it takes five, ten minutes longer, but it sure would be nice just to scoot right through and.
Yeah, that that's the problem.
And they got a way to go around it, you know, I mean, I I don't, I I'm sure it's, there's going to be a lot of discussion yet. And and the manufacturers have a lot of saying and it and, you know.
Yeah, and they haven't, in the past, they haven't been very supportive.
No, they're not, because basically they're off approach.
Yeah.
They're not, that's, that's a big obstacle for, for whoever.
Like one sheriff said, he goes, we'll just tell your county attorney not to enforce those laws. And I'm like.
No.
That's kind of what we do.
That's better than your job, yeah.
Right, same. So we just want it to get figured out so we can be consistent, be fair, and it works for everybody.
And I hope that the legislators will take a serious look at the ending balances for the regions in mental health. You know, to think that we need to get down to a five percent carryover is just not feasible. And so I hope they do a lot of considering on that. And I hope the state taking the whole system over is going to work. I've been working on mental health all thirty-two years I've been on this board. And the changes I've seen, some of them are good, some of them aren't so good.
Yeah.
And the worst part of it is, we have to have our budget in the fifteenth of March. And the worst part of it is, uh, we have to have our budget in the fifteenth of March. Legislators, it's not a big deal now, but it used to be legislator who passed these new rules and. Came into effect July first, we didn't budget anything for them.
Yeah.
And um, I think our region's doing very well, um, but uh, I just wish the legislators sometimes would leave us alone.
Well, unfortunately, there's a certain amount of them down there that think that they have to be busy. And, and develop laws.
Something.
Or, or dabble in thing that, that's the latest greatest. I, I'll be honest with you, uh. Everybody asked me before, if you get me in December and they ask me what I think is gonna happen, I'll tell you, first of all, there will be something. That I have no idea what it is will all of a sudden become a huge issue that we'll have to deal with. Secondly, I firmly believe that we're set to do the budget. That's the only thing that we really need to do. And it sure would be nice one time to do the budget and go home and let the state operate, because I firmly believe the state could operate. Probably two or three years or maybe even longer without any policy changes. Just let us, let you guys work and. I know that will never happen, but uh, it's always kind of been a, a unique goal of mine and just to do the budget. And move on, so. What, another concern of mine, and Lisa's, the shortening up of the voting thing.
I mean, that's a, a big hardship for this office just to get the work done. And you said at least five thousand dollars more.
Budgeted five thousand for extra.
Extra because of that. And what are they, what are they trying to fix here? It's a, it really eliminates people that are living out, my, my sister lives in Mission, Texas. About half the year. There's no way in hell they'll be able to vote. Lisa's tracked it, so it can't.
They are one of my examples.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have that on my desk.
But you know, since you've told me that, I've been watching that and I actually have visited with. Uh, Chairman Kaufman sits in my office. And I brought not only your example, but I had an example where uh, I wrote one of my, I have a trucking operation. And I wrote a check to somebody who pulled cattle for us. Sent it out in mid-December. He called me after the first of the year and said, Haley, I haven't seen the check. Did you write it? And I said, absolutely. I said, I know I put it in the mail. So it went, I said, do some checking and he did some checking, cause he had moved from one residence to the other and we just thought it got. Sent or somebody, you know, threw it away or something and. So finally, two weeks ago, I wrote him a check, another check, put it in the mail to his new address. The old one showed up at his old address. That was on Sunday night when I dropped it, dropped it in the mail in the morning. The old one showed up at his old address on Monday. A new one showed up on Thursday. And so, uh.
I'll give you a better example. We sat here at the end of December and we finalized our represincting and redistricting. On, at about quarter to two, maybe, I think it was quarter to three on. Um, on the thirtieth of December, I went to the post office with an envelope and I said, I need to get this to Des Moines. I'm willing to pay the twenty-seven dollars to get the next day's delivery. And she said, well, the state houses are closed on, on Friday. I said, okay, but I need to get this here. And she said, well, just send it regular mail certified. And she said, it'll be there on, on uh, Monday, the third. I said, okay, that makes sense. And there's no sense paying the money if I don't need to. And she said, then I'll get delivered. And we tracked it. We can see that it was actually in Des Moines on the first of January. They delivered it on the tenth. So I went back to the post office and I said, what happened? She goes, yeah, it was in Des Moines, it sat there. And I said. Okay, why? She goes, well, with COVID, maybe they didn't, she didn't have any excuse. Of course, she apologized and I understand that. But I needed to get this envelope, you know, and delivered. So there are issues with the mail, and I do support the mail, don't get me wrong. I do support the mail, but we do have situations where.
Yesterday I got our mail and I was going through it and we had a letter in with ours. And the address on it was uh, the zip code and Anamosa, Iowa. And I thought, I said to Marilyn, who says? She says, well, certainly not either one of us, so.
So my brother bought some parts for his good loader back here and he went back to Colorado where you normally live. And he left them on the pickup back here. He's got a farm here too. And he says, can you send them to me? I says, okay. So I sent it, the eight dollar box, you know, the two-day delivery thing, whatever. And he still hasn't got it. And this isn't, this last December, it's the year before. It was a hundred and fifty dollars in parts and it's just, it made it to Colorado Springs. Or Denver.
Don't know where it was.
And where, I mean, it's sad, they said, well, we got about twenty trailers out there and we can only do ten at a time, or that's our regular thing, but. They won't hire more people to do overtime or, or catch up and, and I don't know where, where they throw all that stuff and they decide this, they're not coming to deliver it. And to put our whole system, democracy, voting in the hands of the post office. Because now it, it's not when you mail it, it's when it gets here. I mean, we might as well be throwing it out.
My advice is, is either go, come to the courthouse and vote. Or, or vote on election day.
It's a twenty-hour drive for my sister.
I know. I understand, I understand.
And there's a lot of people, I mean, a lot of people that go south for the winter. I mean, both parties, I don't care. I mean, it's not about that, it's, well, I wonder if it isn't, but you know, why? Why, it shouldn't, I don't know. Just doesn't make sense.
Well, with that being said, thanks for coming. I know we have to head to Des Moines, so.
Well, I appreciate it. Like I say, the lines of commu, hopefully the lines of communication will be open and, and uh.
And more importantly, I appreciate the phone call. If you have anything, it doesn't necessarily need to be me, but anybody. Um, you know, county treasurer recorder or supervisors, you know what, we appreciate the phone call and, and I guess our opinion.
Well, I can tell you that a lot of times on certain issues, you probably know about it before I. And so it goes likewise, if you see something that, that you think needs some attention. Please send me an email or give me a call because uh, with all the stuff that's going on. Sometimes it's, it's hard to keep track of every.
Oh, I'm sure.
Thing that's, that's important. And like I say, if I don't know about it. I, a lot of times if it's a bill that comes out of a different committee. I don't really see it until almost the day before it goes to the floor. And then at that point, sometimes it's hard to stop. So uh, like I say, if, if you got, if you guys see something, please uh, shoot me an email and let me know about it.
There's another one with the uh, experimental drugs for COVID. What is that?
That is actually, that is actually my bill. And uh, it comes from a family that uh, had one of their loved ones was on. The ventilator for almost a month. And when it got, they believed in this drug. That is, you know, you know, it's ivermectin, it is off-label, or it is a FDA-approved. Drug for humans in the use of parasites. Just like it is in hogs and cattle, we use it all the time in, in our cattle operation. Uh, I'm sure that the makeup of the drug is a little different from what I administer to the cattle versus the, you. But there are some people that believe that it is helpful in combating COVID. So uh, I got a phone call one evening. Uh, they were struggling, the hospital in Cedar Rapids did not want to give it. They actually had somehow gotten a hold of the drug through a pharmacy. They were looking for a doctor to, to uh, prescribe it. Uh, I said, I don't know that I can help you, but I did through some of my connections of legislators. There, I actually knew that there was a doctor in Omaha from the very get-go that was. Uh, using it, administering it and having some, what he thought were good results with it. Now, I'm not here to merit whether it works or not. But the bill, as I saw, and I kinda as I talked with the Chairman of, of uh. The Health and Human Services Chair Anne Meyer on Fort Dodge, we talked about it and I brought up the fact. There is a, a law on the books that's called right to try. And if you're a, a terminally ill cancer patient. You have the ability to use what we call, what I call an off-label drug to try to see if somehow that would help. And I said, can we, is there some way that we can expand this? And so her and I came up with this. Uh, at the time, like I say, at the time when they wrote that bill, COVID was not an issue. Uh, and I said, so let's expand it. And not only is it to address COVID, but it is to address any kind of an ailment. Any kind of a drug, as long as you are on some sort of life support system. Whether it's a ventilator or whatever, as, you know, as, as we write things, you kind of gotta look out into the future, but. This bill particular, in particular, is that if you're on a ventilator, then that allows you to experiment. With whatever the family, now the family has to sign off on it. You still have to have a doctor write the prescription and administer it, or administer it. And then it removes the liability off the facility or the hospital and the doctor. Because, you know, and I'm sure there will be forms written up, if it passes. But like I said, I've actually had two different families that were in the same situation that wanted to try something. Uh, and I just think it gives the family some hope, you know. So.
Well, thank you.
You bet. Thanks for meeting with me and like I say, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for stopping by. Drive safe.
You bet.
Pleasure.
An entrance permit for Charles Davison in uh, Perry Township, section twenty-nine. Uh, he's looking for a class D field entrance on the north side of a hundred and seventeen.
The motion is sent in to approve the field entrance permit for Charles Davison. All those in favor?
Oh, culvert coles, uh, we purchase culverts on an annual basis and we generally have two suppliers who are. Are suppliers, uh, so Mike solicited proposals based on length, the type of culvert we like. Uh, and the dimensions, the diameter of it. Uh, the low bid is a Loa culvert for twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars as opposed to metal culverts. Incorporated at thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety cents. Prices have gone up on average about forty-seven percent per unit, forty-seven unit foot. Um, from last year. And, and again, I think they're. Could be delayed in providing materials as well. So we would just like the permission to place some orders with the alloy and get that process going.
Motion approved reluctantly, but we had no really way of compensating or changing the game right now. So, you know, I mean, we're on the needs of material. How do they compare price-wise for concrete ones? Unlike our bridges going from wood decks to concrete, it's actually makes more sense.
Okay.
For just a little con, culverts, all those in favor? I motion Kerry.
And we have the contact for road surface aggregate for one lane quarries. Or pro one signatures is based off the rock bits that we've uh, reviewed and recommended. Approval of previous meetings.
Is, is just, just a. Contract with one quarry, I mean, we.
The, the other one will come in.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve. I would second, I put motion in a second, all those in favor?
The increase of the cover prices too, we had that figured in the budget.
Yeah. And then Lance says we need to. Have the board set a possible date for public hearing on the five-year road program. Which uh, I think is, we can do here is.
Yes, in this office, yeah.
So and, do we have a date at work?
We were looking at February twenty-fourth.
Seven P M, yeah. Did that change?
No.
I told February seventeenth. Oh, you know what? Oh, I am, I am incorrect, it was the twenty-fourth.
The motion to set public hearing to the twenty-fourth, five-year road plan.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Right.
Hi, motion Kerry.
And that will also be a Zoom meeting, correct?
By me?
We're gonna have it here in Des Moines, yes, so it will be a Zoom meeting.
If a place to put up your maps and stuff or you wanna do that. Do it on, or do we just sit on the screen?
I think we shared it last year, uh, when we were down at the Pearson Center and I think we should be able to do the same thing here.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I haven't wrote anything down yet.
Okay. At this point, we're, we're going to welcome Tricia up to the. Tricia, hot, right, you're from ECIA.
Sorry, Tricia's not here today. She's in CDVG training actually, so I guess come in.
I knew the hair was different.
Um, do we have anyone on Zoom that's Dave on there?
Dave's PC.
I am here.
Oh, hi Dave. Okay, so who is Dave? Dave is with the Leisure Lake.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't know, Larry, did you meet with him or?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So we're just here revisiting.
And Dave has not seen this yet. I just had it yesterday about quarter to five.
Okay, okay. Okay, so um. So, are, do you wanna talk there about how you, an outer?
We kind of changed the layout of, of the building and put a full basement under it with a concrete cap.
Okay.
So it gives you the full twenty-four hundred square feet for the shelter, storm shelter. And then the upstairs would be uh. Rec area, whatever, and have a kitchen and a shower and a couple of bathrooms. There are still people that camp out there, bring camper out or, or just tent camp on some of the properties, so they, they feel we need to have a show. Separate shower and it wouldn't be handicapped accessible and that's all in here, so. So it looks like a pretty good plan. I guess is what you need for to write the grant.
Yeah, so basically, um, the CDVG Stephen, our COVID funds, we have to have go through a city, county. Um, and this is a nonprofit, so they're obviously not as your county, so we need to have support from you guys to. Basically, uh, be the pass-through. And the great applicant per se. So we would write the grant, we would administer the grant. Um, it would be a matter of, I spoke to Eric Van Langford yesterday because he's the auditor in Clinton County. They had just, we just got approved on a grant for their, one of their nonprofits. And I just asked him. You know, how labor intensive is doing this? He said he just treats these just like a literal pass-through. Um, he has a line item on the budget that says for grant funds, you know. Um, and it's a matter of, we do the backend work, we send um, a form. Need your signature, then we upload it up on our Iowa grants uh, website. And then they will send the county the check. The county reimburses, um, whether it be Leisure Lake or. Or whoever's the work is involved with, so. I asked him, as far as like, if we said questions, you could call him. Um, last night, we'll go to just approve. Especially my house. Um, the city of Kogota just approved the same type of situation for the Y. For getting work done at the Y, so they would be the pass-through as well, so it's not um, an uncommon thing, I guess, I just. It's whether or not you guys want to go for it or not.
Tricia, but did they find their destination for nonprofit?
Yes, um, Dave, do you have, um, the form for the nonprofit?
I have, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I asked the treasurer and she asked the attorney, the attorney forwarded, uh. Uh, part of a tax return, so it doesn't really say what type of corporation it is, so I'll have to get back to you. On that, but it is a nonprofit, now whether it's a. Three C or whatever, I don't know that setting here right now.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
That condition is there before we get too deep into it.
And then also part of this grant, you have to show that fifty-one percent of the. Recipients are low to moderate income, so we've already done that survey, so that part is out of the way. Um, but we just don't want to go any further and put any more staff time into this if it's not going to go, if it's not getting a or so.
I think the consensus of the board was it's, it's a good idea and that we would be willing to work with them.
I think it's a worthwhile project, yeah, I like the idea of having especially in front of you, you know, that you have to. Take with, with the, with the. I suppose a proposal or the.
Yeah, so basically, when we submit the grant, we have to have a quote, however, when it's funded, we have to redo all of that.
So you go for bids then, yeah, well, that makes complete sense.
So we actually.
Basically, a budget is not a bid, it's a budget.
Right.
Yeah, so just kind of to go, they wanted a actual, like a, uh.
And it gives a nice breakdown on your, to the cost of.
Breakdown. However.
I like the, I like the whole concept of it, that this is a proposal or not a bid, but yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, unfortunately, they're going to have to spend another one if they want to do the.
Sure. Well, as a bid, yeah, I mean, this is, you know, I mean, you can't. You're certainly not gonna sell the contract to what your bid is before you put your bid in, so this is.
I guess Lisa, do you have any concerns?
When does this money come in?
It just, it's a rolling application, so as soon as we get it.
Budgeted, so we would need to. Depends if it comes in this year or next year.
Yeah.
To either put it in for next year's budget or amend this year's budget.
And that's what Eric, he had mentioned, something you could put a line item in there now, or you could wait and do an amendment later.
So I mean, which is not an issue if, if you're refunded in a timely manner.
But I doubt that you're gonna get it all expended if this is, if we're already in the middle of February, you go to bid.
It has to be done, the project has to be done by May of twenty-three.
So see, we're gonna even put it in both years budget. Some will have to come, I'm sure some expenses will come out of this year's, some expenses will come on the next fiscal year, so we'll need to do both.
Yeah. I don't.
I'm just saying, we don't have any choice, just, we need to do it that way.
And that was just what I had, so it's not. Not a big deal, right?
We'll have to, we'll have to take it in as a revenue. Yeah, but we don't have anything, so therefore, as I'm saying, some of this money will come out of this year's budget that we have nothing in. And since we're working on next year's budget, we'll have to put it in there so we can. Yeah. That's why, I mean, if you don't think that anything's gonna happen before July first.
Or I would hope there's going to be some, some work before that.
But that's what she's saying, that we gotta pay for.
I totally get it. It's a reimbursable, um.
I still have to have it in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not authorized to pay anything, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I certainly think we can do that, correct?
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm.
I mean, so are we talking just five hundred thousand, is that what we're talking about?
The grant is five hundred thousand, um, however, this project, it looked like it was like five eighty-nine.
And how are we gonna get, and how are we gonna get the money, the match?
They, they have sixty thousand.
Sixty raised so far.
Right, so how are we going to get that?
Um, as far as like, they'll just pay for.
Hmm. I don't know about that, if we're administering the grant.
We're administering the grant.
Well, I'm saying, if you want us to pay the five hundred thousand, so. I, I would have that as a question.
Okay.
Because we're gonna have to pass audit. And you can't have us and someone else paying on the project would be my guess. I don't know, but wouldn't you all agree that if we're going to? Wouldn't, I mean, cause otherwise.
I think we'd obviously need some clarification.
I will, yes, and I'm, and I'm sure that we will be subject to a single audit on this. That would be my guess, I don't know that, but I will.
Sounds above that.
I will contact the state auditors for my, um, direction.
Yeah, and if, yeah, I mean, if the city's done it and, and Clinton County's done it also, I suppose it's, it's a.
I don't know why you'd have a private organization. Pay on a.
I don't know that for sure.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so.
Before the, the, what was less than five hundred thousand, to be honest, so now we're over it, so I'm. I'm not sure if they give you that money, you put it in the account, or if, I'm not, I'm not sure, since you're writing the checks.
Correct.
So, but the state basically just wants us to have documentation from them that they have the money, cash in hand type thing. And then what happens from there is E C A will let you know as far as administering. Yeah, I'm not sure.
So are we prepared to take action as to, um, agreeing to back the C B? C D B G grant? I would make that.
I think that's what they're waiting for.
Yeah, I would make that motion so they could start to proceed, yes.
Okay. Environmental and everything else.
What's the point of today to set the public hearing for the C D B G grant? So you can have the public hearing, isn't that?
Yes. It doesn't send it on.
Doesn't say that. When you say environmental, what do you mean?
Just easy answers to do, uh.
So specifically then.
We do that in-house.
If it's not to set the public hearing.
It's not like the engineering is.
It would be to set the public hearing if we need to shut that public hearing, but is that under whose?
Is it cost?
No, we, we do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we do that. She'll do like, she'll do background, like, she'll research the, what it was used for in the past, and it's like video grounds.
Discussion, possible action on the leisure like C D B G grant community facility program, so. Because this is a C D B G, don't you have to have a public hearing?
We do.
So isn't.
Does that come before us saying we will back the project?
What the public hearing is for. What's the point, I guess, here, let's back up, what's the point of the public hearing?
They require it as part of the grant. So, and plus, it's, I mean, obviously spending money, so.
But. Would we not have to agree that we're, we're considering it? Um, going to do support.
And you would do that by setting the public hearing, you're allowing that public hearing to, to move forward.
Okay, so can we do that at the same time?
On the date of the public hearing, if you had the public hearing first, then we can approve.
Okay, let's, let's set a date for a public hearing.
March first at nine thirty.
Well, I didn't say that on you.
You said March first. Yeah.
Is that seven?
Yeah.
At what time?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty. Is that your motion, Mike?
That is my motion, as long as the time sensitivity of this is in order.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay.
Okay. I, I thought when they first presented.
Yes, we did, I mean, we have to do it environmental, yeah, I mean, the narrative piece of it also. We can literally just attach the public hearing day and submit it the same day.
Okay. So that would be my motion to set the public here for the county P used as a pass through for the grant for the leisure lake. Uh, March first at nine thirty.
Second time.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Alright.
Hi, motion Kerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to have a second public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, you're working on it, alright. I don't know anything about it.
Tricia should be getting everything that you need, I mean, as far as that, so I can.
But we still use the public hearing date for the assessment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is Christina coming in today? Forty-six.
Are we going to same day?
No.
Yeah, we want to, yeah. Maybe we should do it now.
Okay, they have.
Sorry, guys, morning. Sorry. They've reminded me, so we also have to do, it's called a community development housing needs analysis. And it's, it's really just stuff we do on the back end, so. For this grant is part of it, um, doesn't cost anything, we do it in-house, we just need to set a public hearing for that as well, so.
Can we do it?
Nine forty-five?
Yes.
Nine thirty-five.
Nine thirty-five?
It basically is just, um, to let you, just because I'm not a hundred percent familiar with this. It's just to show the, the needs of the home population and it's, it's a priority for Leisure Lake, so. It's just a formal document that doesn't change much throughout these grants, it's just one of the things they want done, so. Um, I don't see why we can't do it the same day, should be fine, so.
I'll make a motion to set that public hearing for March first and nine thirty-five.
Second.
The motion in a second? All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi, motion Kerry.
And you will get us the. Explanation of what them public carries.
Sure, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Okay, Melissa, you up?
I am. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February first, twenty twenty-two board proceedings as written by Hunter Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Who wants to in a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor?
Alright.
Hi, motion Kerry.
Motion needed to accept, place, unfile and authorize the chair's signature and the county records report a fees collected for the month of January twenty twenty-two in a lot of eighty-three thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-two cents.
Move to approve. Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Alright.
Uh, motion needed to approve a classy beer permit and class B native wine permit to Tada Meets LLC at eighteen zero six-six Highway sixty-four, Macocana. Effective January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two to January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in, in second to approve the class C beer permit and class B native wine permit. For Tada, all those in favor?
Alright.
Hi, motion Kerry.
Motion needed to approve the renewal of a classy liquor license without door service and Sunday sales to Bellevue Golf Club Inc. at three two two nine two, three hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue, Bellevue. Effective April first, twenty twenty-two to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the classy liquor license for the Bellevue Country Club, all those in favor? Hi, motion Kerry.
And as we're moving towards, um. And as we're moving towards the home stretch on the budget process. Today, I also need a motion to approve the publication in the three official county newspapers of the notice. For the public hearing on the maximum possible tax levy to be included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. County budget with public hearing dates after March second, twenty twenty-two, at ten A M. in the boardroom at the courthouse. On Tuesday, during the meeting. Well, Shelby told me that date, she.
March first is the Tuesday.
Yeah, she, Shelby told me that date, so she must have looked at the calendar wrong, so yes, it should be March.
First. We'll have to treat public carries that day.
Yes, yes.
So March first at ten A M.
March first at ten A M., yes. Okay.
I would second that, what's the change?
Okay, saying the public hearing for the. Um, maximum levy. All is in favor?
Alright.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Okay. I guess then, Luann, you're up.
Good morning. Okay, calendar for this week. Four o'clock this afternoon is a Macocan River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Larry. Five thirty tonight is the O W D A leadership and Iowa workforce development town hall meeting by Zoom for Jack. Wednesday, February ninth, the eight A M. is the early childhood Iowa State Design Preparation meeting by Zoom for Jack. At nine A M., um, Mike will be on Key Make Hughes just taught program. Ten A M. is a zero to five and sixty minutes meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at five P M. is the Isaac's Executive Board meeting in Des Moines for Larry. Thursday, February tenth, from nine A M. to three thirty P M. is the Isaac statewide supervisors meeting in Des Moines for all of you. Um, there is a seven A M. Bellevue hometown pride meeting by Zoom, um, for Mike. And at ten o'clock is an Iowa D H S council meeting by Zoom. Um, for Jack, I don't know how you're going to manage that, but. I'm sure you'll figure that out, we, whatever, the other, it's on your calendar.
I know.
And at noon, um, you can add here, um, list is a Jackson County. Area Tourism Association meeting, and they haven't sent out the details on how to connect for that, but Mike usually attends those. Friday, February eleventh at ten A M. is the Southern Judicial Department of Corrections meeting in Davenport for Larry. Monday, February fourteenth, at seven A M. is the early childhood Iowa Executive Board meeting. Into it for Jack, and at one o'clock is an Iowa workforce unified state plan modification. Um, vacations for twenty twenty-two by Zoom, also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, February thirteenth at nine A M. And that evening at six o'clock will be a conservation board meeting, it'll be at Hurstville for Larry, it'll also, they sent Zoom information for it. So we'll be able to attend by Zoom. Then, I believe is all I have for you today.
Okay. Thank you, Luann. Okay, uh, we have several work sessions this morning following our board meeting. One with the maintenance supervisor, one with the. Health department and, um. On the five-year road plan and, um. I think we'll probably be talking a little bit about the budget. And, um, so. If there's no sort of business that we have to translate, transition, transact.
Isn't Christina coming in this morning?
She is ill, oh, they said.
Okay, just under unfinished business, maybe just to report our, uh, board and commission reports. Uh, we had a nine-one-one meeting last week. And then I went to the, um, for, for meeting afterwards, when you guys are at the conservation. So the equipment, most of the equipment for the new system is installed in the basement and it sounds like moving up and running by March fourteen.
Great.
Um, so, yeah, that's a good thing and. It's moving forward.
And how's the wiring going?
Slowly.
Slowly.
We had, we also had a D C A meeting and that, we were actually allocated a little more money, so they're talking about doing, allocated to each school. Um, some funds for the summer program for the grade level reading, so I don't know, did we have something allocated in our budget for grade level reading?
We do.
Yeah, so maybe I could talk to and see if that's still a need for them if they get. Funding from the D C A.
It's in the current budget, it's also, uh, in next year's budget.
So, what kind of dollars were they talking about from D C A?
I, I think they were talking in the range of like ten thousand dollars. It depended on how many school systems would participate, of course, and then they could.
Cause I know E C I A, or E C I also donates some money to that, so.
I may just give Tom a call at some point here. See what he thinks about what funding they may, or as far as W, I don't. Where does, where does our funding go to for the grade level reading? Did it go to a pot?
I believe it goes to a pot.
That, okay, that is probably not, and I think if I remember it, is it only five thousand dollars?
That's right.
Maybe we're not even. I don't think it's.
Yeah, we had them sign an agreement.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's a worthwhile program, so if they do get extra funding, I think they. And, you know, I mean, it's it's a worthwhile program, so if they do get extra funding, I think they may be able to use it. That's all I have for reports. And if there's no further business, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
One second. We have a motion in a second to adjourn. All was in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carry.